I want to call our village board meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Order, roll call please.
Niall Lefrake?
Here.
Phil Lilam?
Here.
Lauren?
Chris Donner?
Here.
Erin Moran?
Here.
Sam Kaufman?
Here.
Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Okay, first thing is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability.
We confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on Friday, November twelfth. The final agenda was made available online with the final packet on November eleventh, and the final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on November eleventh.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, would anybody like anything pulled, or look for a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sam Kaufman?
Second.
Second by Niall Lefrake. Any other comments? Call the question, in favor of the side?
Aye.
Post, I have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment for any item, on the agenda, off the agenda, or in general?
I have no slips of paper.
Anybody like to make a comment? I had to take my glasses off because they're foggy right now, but I can still see hands if they go up. Todd?
I just wanted to offer one note, while it's not an agenda item, it is Caitlin's last meeting with the village of Wannakee, for the second time.
Yeah.
As you know, Caitlin had her first stint with us back a few years ago as the assistant administrator, left to run the village of Cross Plains for a little while. Came back to us as a deputy administrator and clerk, and has done a great job for us for almost three more years, but she's heading to a great new opportunity with the city of Sun Prairie. So I would just like to congratulate Caitlin on her time with us. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to share, I know putting you on the spot, but...
Thanks. No, I just think, you know, it's such a great organization. I feel like most, I mean, everyone has become more like family to me than coworkers, so I really well miss my Wannakee family. Thank you for offering to come back, and the almost six years of being here has been really great, so thank you.
Well, I'll just say on behalf of the village board, thank you for your service and all this time in the community, as well as for our employees. Only positive feedback for you, Caitlin, it's been always very good, and wish you well with where you're going.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think she deserves a round of applause. Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? It's gonna be tough to beat that one, actually. All right, we'll move on, thank you. Public hearing, first item, public hearing and discussion action on request by Forward Development Group on behalf of Kramer Development for amendment to the general development plan of Woodland Crest to include lots one and two of CSM four, six, nineteen, corner of Century Avenue and Peaceful Valley Parkway. So before we start, I'm going to say that my employer has affiliation with Jeff Kramer, Kramer Development, so not necessarily this particular project at this one, but we do have others, so I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, and do we need to designate somebody, Brian, to run this part of the meeting?
Sure, I think that makes sense. Yeah, just have somebody to open and close the public hearing and run the discussion.
Do I do that, or do we need somebody to...
It doesn't need to be me.
Yeah, I think you can just have consensus. Anybody want to raise their hand?
I move Gary Hertzberg chair there.
All right, so it sounds like Gary, you are the one chosen, so I'm gonna leave you guys in Gary's hand, and Todd, you just want to text me when you're done?
Sure.
Okay. Todd, do you want to kick this off?
I think Tim has this item for you, Gary.
All right, very good. So this item, the items associated with this request are found in pages thirty-two to fifty-five in the packet. So on your screen is an image of the area of the, where the impacted area is, and shown in yellow, so Kramer Development is requesting approval of an amendment of the Woodland Crest general development plan that would add that area in yellow at the corner of Peaceful Valley Parkway and County Q into the Woodland Crest GDP. Allowance of commercial uses on this site, as allowed in the Woodland Crest GDP, are consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for commercial uses at this location. Preliminary plans have been submitted, they are included in the packet. Those plans show access points to the site, one of them being at the very far northwest corner of the site. A traffic impact analysis was provided and shows that the site indicates that access at that location would not impact signal operation at Century Avenue and Peaceful Valley Parkway. Plan commission recommended conditional approval at their October meeting, as well as the joint plan commission also recommended approval of this request. Staff is also recommending approval, available for questions.
Is there anybody...
I think you might want to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing now. Is there any comments? Anyone in the audience?
I don't have any slips.
You don't have any slips?
If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Board members, any comments, concerns, questions?
No concerns. The use of the property kind of fits in with what it else is going on there, so I think it's probably as good a thing as we could have to go in the corner. I guess I could make a motion to approve the amendment to the general development plan, GDP for lots one and two of CSM forty-six, nineteen, Dane County, per staff recommendations.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion been made in second to approve. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Here it comes.
He's on his way.
He's pissed too now. Oh, here he comes.
You guys got rid of the attorney too, huh?
Number two.
Okay, number two for public hearing, public hearing and discussion action on two thousand twenty-two budget. Todd, any comments before we open up the public hearing?
I think Renee's prepared to offer a presentation, if you care to have that prior to the hearing, Chris.
Sure, go ahead. Okay. So just again, a reminder of where we're at in our budget process. On October eighteenth, we did the preliminary budget proposal presentation. At our last meeting on November first, we had the additional public comment period, and then tonight is the official required public hearing, and then after the public hearing, the board will consider the final budget approval. So an update on some of the things that were unknown at the last meeting, and some things that are still unknown. We did get some of the levies from the other jurisdictions. We have M A T C's levy, that was an increase of point eight-nine percent. We might have had that at the last meeting, I can't remember. We just, last week, got the school district levy, and that is an increase of eight point oh-seven percent. And the county, I believe they adopted their budget last week, but we don't have our portion of the county levy yet. Hopefully, maybe later this week or early next week, we will get that. We need that, obviously, to calculate our full tax rate. Other things that we don't have yet are the credits, which are important, because those are direct deductions from people's tax bills, so once we get those credits, we plug that in as well to arrive at the final tax bill. So I did this slide, this kind of is the changes to the budget from the October eighteenth preliminary budget to the budget that's in your packet tonight. So one of the big unknowns has been the manufacturing assessment. So we did get that last week, so we have the total assessed value, we're just over two-point-one billion of assessed value in total. However, the manufacturing was down from my initial estimates that were used in October. My estimates were based on the August manufacturing, the equalized values, and factoring in our, the estimated assessment ratio, and so not all the appeals. So people can appeal their manufacturing assessment, just like they can appeal their home assessment, and those were only resolved within the past two weeks. So unfortunately, that was not in our favor, and does impact the tax rate a bit. But we had some other changes, both positive and negative to the tax levy, or adding or subtracting, I should say, from my, the initial budget that we presented. EMS, once the final population calculation was done, we actually got a little bit more of the EMS budget, close to seven thousand more added to our levy. There was about twenty-three thousand added to the levy for different health changes during open enrollment. Primarily, those were people who had been on the single plan, got married during the year, and now they're planning to move on to a family plan starting January first. We added in about four thousand dollars related to the tentative union contract negotiations that will be discussed later, in a later agenda item. But then we did have some reductions to the levy. We talked about the staffing proposal last time, that brings the levy down about twenty-seven thousand. We were able to reduce the contingency from thirty thousand down to fifteen. So what we have left, kind of earmarked in contingency, is about five thousand to cover the increase in the hourly rate for the employees, that we're trying to give them a net neutral impact for the health insurance increase. And then we left about ten thousand, sort of an unknown staffing or recruiting needs that we may have. I had talked about using some ARPA money to ease in the information technology increase, so that's now included in the budget. And then the senior center was notified from Dane County that they got an additional sixty-two hundred in funding, so we were able to reduce the levy by that amount. So the net decrease to the levy was currently at thirty-nine thousand, oh forty-one. So what does that mean to our overall tax rate calculation? So you may recall, from last time, we were at three-point-four-seven percent of an increase, now we're down a little bit to three-point-two-eight percent, bringing the tax rate to six-point-one-nine-nine. And our equalized was, it went down even a little bit further from where we were preliminarily. General fund expenditures, they're pretty close to where we're at, they're up a little bit, because with the reorganization, while the net impact is only about twenty-seven thousand, some of that's additional expenditures and some of that's additional revenues, so the expenditures actually went up a little bit from last time. But, you know, we were at three-point-nine-two percent increase in the general fund expenditures last time, we're just a little higher at four-point-oh-nine. So this slide, this again is just the village share only of estimated tax bills at different values, so that went down a couple dollars on the very bottom, average home value of three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. That estimated tax bill for the village share went down about four dollars in our calculations. So just a reminder of the rule of thumb that we've had in previous presentations, for every ten thousand dollar change in the levy, it's a point oh-oh-six change in the tax rate, point one percent change, or about a two-dollar up or down for the average home, which, you know, from the previous slide was the twenty-three, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars.
If I could jump in, could you go back one slide? I just want to note, just for clarity for people who are watching or who haven't been following the process thus far, you had said that the taxes on a estimated home went down by four, on an average home went down by four dollars. That's down by four dollars from last...
From October.
From the October presentation that you saw. I think what's most important for taxpayers to realize is that the village portion on an average home, in total with the proposed budget, goes up by the difference between twenty-two, twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-one, so that's ninety-nine, up ninety-nine dollars?
Yeah.
Approximately, for the average, for the average home.
Yep, I should have said that.
And if you can go back to the following, the, there you go, that, in this rule of thumb, I do want to also make clear that you heard public requests and comments, in addition to comments from the library board at your last meeting, to restore funding of just over twenty-seven thousand dollars to fund two existing positions in a promotional process for two existing village staff. The budget that you see does not include that increase, and I wanted to clarify for the board what those adjustments would mean, should you care to make them. So if the board cares to provide the full funding, twenty-seven thousand, forty dollars, that would take the tax rate from three-point-two-eight, oh, that's not shown here, but you're...
Oh, I can bring that up.
Yes. The tax rate, as is proposed here, is at three-point-two-eight percent increase. That would increase to three-point-five-two percent.
Why isn't that changing on the screen?
I don't know. It's a separate presentation, actually. You might have to...
End that one?
Push the presentation button?
Oh.
To the right, one more, right there.
Oh, got it.
So on the bottom scenario three there is to supply the entirety of funding. That would take the tax rate from three-point-two-eight percent increase to a three-point-five-two percent increase. There you see the tax change on the average home of five dollars. Just to lay out an incremental approach, if you care to consider proportional or partial funding, and then ask the library to consider other alternatives to fulfill a funding commitment, if they care to make it, to support the positions, there you see the result of a ten thousand dollar increase specifically for the library, to fund the library, and that would go, or to fund the additional positions, that would take it up, as you can see, the three-point-two-eight to three-point-three-seven. There you can see in scenario two, increasing the library budget by twenty thousand. So for those watching and those here, I would reiterate for the board's knowledge that the existing budget, not including any funds for the additional positions, does result in an increase in library funding of what, four-point-one-five percent, sixty-one thousand dollar increase in funding for specific library purposes. So this additional funding would certainly be on top of that, and I wanted to provide all that information for you to consider. Staff doesn't have a particular opinion on whether you, whether you should or shouldn't afford the increase. The only note I would make is that if a partial funding is granted, let's say, let's say you want to allocate ten thousand dollars to support the increase. What should be kept in mind in that case is if the library board's decision then is to fund the position using either reducing, reducing operating costs in other areas, or finding an alternative source to support the full funding of the positions, the eyes wide open to that would be that next year, we would face essentially an automatic increase related to those positions, if they're partially funded by other means. So just a caution, I mean, we've done, we've been through this exercise before, you know that drill about partial funding, it's certainly something to keep in mind if that's, if that's what the board chooses to do. So what else did you have, Renee?
Just... I should have not done two separate ones.
There you go.
Just the final reminder that after the public hearing... What the heck?
And Todd, we were, what, about twenty-eight percent of the, is that kind of the number we were, the village-ish portion of the, and we probably don't know that yet, because we don't know all the, the tax bill.
Oh, oh, the total pie? Yeah, yeah, we're... Do you recall the percentage we are, as we estimate, of the total tax pie?
Last year, we were twenty-eight percent. So, you know, that usually only fluctuates, you know, maybe one to two percent, up or down, depending, you know, on how all the other jurisdictions come in. So, sorry, here's the last slide, just a reminder, after the public hearing, that we would be looking for action on approving the budget.
Okay, thank you, Todd, Renee. So then I'm gonna open up our public hearing for anybody who'd like to address the board on our budget. Caitlin, do you have any forms?
I do not.
Does anyone, is there anyone who would wish to speak? Not gonna go two minutes, I guess. So, all right, then I'm gonna close our public hearing. I'm just gonna make a couple quick comments, and then if you guys all want to leave, and that would be great. First, thank you to Todd and Renee for putting the budget together. I do have a little portion of it, and giving them some guidance is my role with the village board.
And I'd also recognize, Chris, you did, most, many of your department's heads are here in the back row, they certainly play a big role, too.
Absolutely, thank you all for that. With the budget, when it was first proposed, I tried to give a general overview to Todd and Renee as they're going through, as you know, we've gone through zero-based budget for a lot of years, with our department heads, try to keep our budget as flat as we possibly can. And in those meetings, I came up with at a three-point-five percent as a general, where we wanted to try to stay. That does not mean we have to stay there, as you all know. If there's things you'd like changed as we go through this, obviously, we can do that. If you have something that you think we need to be adding, or something that we're not doing enough of, or things that we're doing too much, this is your role as village trustee to make sure you point out those things, and we have those discussions tonight. I will point out that, from my perspective with the library funding, it's a tough one for me to do this, because we have all our departments, whether it be public works to the village center, to all that, they all would like new employees, and they would all like to give raises, and they would all like to do different things, and so when we're sticking over to one spot specifically, that was a challenge to me, because I don't want people to feel slighted within our other departments. But I also recognize that we have some phenomenal employees that we want to make sure we keep here at our library, and are deserving of this increase. So I'm gonna support, my position is gonna be to support the full funding, because I don't like to see any deferred funding, because that's just gonna cause a problem for our budget in the future versus right now. And I don't view it as a problem right now. I view it as, you know, an opportunity, that we can make sure that that library that we've put a lot of resources into, make sure that we have the resources to them to make sure they can provide it to our residents and people coming. So outside of that, I'm very happy with where our budget stands as it was presented to this point, but I would support fully funding those two library personnel. So two, or three? Two. Yes.
And I, to be clear, the board's action is to approve the levy support to the library?
Right.
Technically, the role of adjusting or promoting any given employee of the library is the responsibility of the board, library board.
Correct.
So you're supporting the funding to the levy.
Correct. So I'm just gonna kind of randomly go through, and if you guys have comments or things you'd like to state, please do so. Last one to arrive, first one to speak. Bill?
So, again, I don't know exactly how the library board works, is the library board, is that, is that community members that make decisions, is that how it works? And I guess I, ours, beyond the other district boards, we have like five-year plans, I would be a lot happier if I saw what the five-year plan looked like, as far as costs and everything, because I think we are throwing a bunch of resources in the library, we have a great library, and I want to keep it that way. I'm just like, is there like, feels like in my other districts, we have long-term planning, we know what the estimate is gonna be, there's a sort of an idea what's going to happen, so it's like, hey, if it's gonna be ten percent next year, we should know that now, right? I mean, because it's gonna add in. And second, I don't know, like, do the, do we have, I think where Westport is contributing to our library, does that happen in our area?
We have the advantage of having our highly capable library director here, I bet he'd be willing to address both of your questions.
Sure. So trustee Random, to your first question about long-term planning, the library board, this year, we undertook a, as part of our five-year strategic planning process, of staffing and assessment and reorganization process. So we sat down with Todd and Caitlin earlier this year and said, how do we, when we look to kind of build upon our services, what, how should we staff ourselves? And that's where these new positions came from. So the idea is that over the next five years, we would be implementing these changes in phases, and obviously, we know that there's finite amount of money each year, so we would work with the village to do that. Because, we prioritize these two positions this year because they were existing positions, they were, they were existing people moving to expanded positions as opposed to hiring somebody brand new. So that's the background there. For Westport and the other surrounding communities, they all pay library, the county library tax. We, the village of Wannakee, because you support a municipal library, you're exempt from that tax, so they indirectly support not just our library, but all of the libraries in Dane County.
Do you know the numbers?
I don't, it's not a high number for Westport, to us specifically, but it's, we get approximately two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars from Dane County was this year's reimbursement, and that's our pool of money for those types of municipalities.
Thanks.
Todd? Erin?
Can I, sorry, can I go in a second?
Sure. Bill? Bill?
Oh, I'm not necessarily against your motion, or thoughts there, and I don't know much about what a librarian does, you know, I, just one of those guys that checks out a book once in a while, and et cetera. But from a business standpoint, I think the board has listened to what you wanted since we started talking about moving from the old library to the new one. And in two thousand and seventeen, we had a budget of payroll and benefits of six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, and we're going to this year of a thousand and four, over those five short years, that's about sixty percent increase. I think the board has listened and supported you. Going forward, I think you're going to have to be a little bit more prudent, because I don't see us supporting a forty percent increase over ten years going forward. So just, just something to think about, a little bit from where are we looking at it as a business, and I hope that we continue developing people that are promotable, and that we have to protect people that are maybe as good as our librarian, to keep them from leaving to another job to run another library, so, yes, I want to try to keep our people.
Sam?
I'll be blunt in saying that I support the full funding now, but we have to keep those increases in check going forward. We have a new library, we have all these new hires, a wonderful facility now, and we just have to be very careful.
Erin, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I, as also a library board member, I fully support our full increase. I will say, like, the library board, we, Eric and Caitlin and Todd did do a great staff assessment, and a lot of this is like reorganizing or reprioritizing, like, the needs of the new space. So I just want to clarify, when we say the full funding, this is for all three of the new positions? No?
Two. Two.
This is still two. Okay. I just didn't know. Great. That's, I guess, all.
Okay, Gary?
You know, I, when I look at this, this scenario two, that talks about, you know, giving the library some of their request, and I wish we had a policy in place, because I look at employees who, I think in this case, at least one of them went on to get their masters in library science. And I wish we had a policy in place, because I look at employees who, I think in this case, at least one of them went on to get their masters in library science. You know, people that, in our organization, to make that kind of commitment and investment, you know, in their career, I wish we had a policy in place that automatically help compensate for that next level that they make. So maybe that's something we should consider in the future. I know that these two people are pretty critical for what they do and what they'll do in the future, and I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't fund them, we haven't opportunity, we may lose those employees. And I guess you always have that chance, but that concerns me. Um, and it seems like it almost puts us in a worse position if we don't fully fund it when we get into future years. So, based on that, I would probably support fully funding both those positions at this point.
Lila?
I agree with, uh, the board that we should fully fund the position. Uh, we have a beautiful building, but what's more important than the building is the people inside of it, the staff, who does, who comes up with the programming and everything that everyone does in the library. A library, along with the public schools, are one of the biggest equalizers in society, and that's why we need to support our libraries. It's so that everybody in town has the, has an opportunity to go get a book, get the resources, use a computer. And it's something that they can do without charge. And, um, that's why funding these two positions is important, is so that we have quality staff, quality programming, continuous. And, um, but I do hope that with a five-year plan, that somehow we can get the library budget on a more even kill.
Okay, um, so that, that's kind of our library discussion. Do we have any other comments regarding the rest of the budget? Or concerns, or things you'd like to see changed? No? Okay, so I don't see anything with there. I'll just add one last thing with regards to the hires, or not the hires, the promotions, I should say promotions. As we have staff that get promoted, I don't want any of our staff to feel like we're pinpointing out two different people and we're giving them this over others that may feel that they're deserving, too. That's always a risk you run with any of these types of things, especially with promotions, if we're, if we're giving those right amounts. Same thing with, we have a, a police, um, you know, somebody's being promoted to sergeant, you know. Are we gonna be bumping them? Is it gonna be a competitive situation? Each one of these is gonna be different and unique. But I want all of our employees to know that they're all valued, not that we're pinpointing out any specific employees here. All of our employees are valued. So, with that, so if we add that to our budget, what will our number be? At three-five-two?
Three-point-five-two percent.
Yes.
Gary?
So I'd make a motion, um, that we approve the two thousand and twenty-two budget, that includes the, uh, funding of the two libraries, um, personnel, um, to the tax rate of three-point-five-two.
Do we have a motion?
A second.
And a second by Dr. Random. Any other comments?
Chris, one quick note. I think technically, the process is to approve a resolution. Is that correct, Renee?
Yes.
Okay.
But I just wanna-
Gary, if you wanna look up at the board, so I wonder if they-
If you can see that motion, otherwise, I can pull up the resolution.
The resolution is on page sixty-six of your packet, and it's a resolution approving the two thousand and twenty-two Village of Wannakee budget. And I would say with, you know, I would, with the, uh, full library funding as discussed, is how, how that motion would-
Okay. I will make the resolution approving the twenty-two, twenty-two Village of Wannakee budget, including the two library positions.
Motion by Gary, second by Dr. Random. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, did you have a-
Well, I guess I, so this budget that we're about to go on includes the staffing changes that are next?
With the, with the motion that he's making.
Okay.
It will.
I just wanted to read.
Okay? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, posed. I have it. All right, under new business, we have discussed and take action on organizational review of administration, finance department, including job descriptions, action on updated village wage skills, and salary adjustment for finance director.
So flipping way back to page one forty-two of your packet. So, in light of, in, in light of Caitlin's decision, uh, uh, and her departure, along with uh, the element of a currently vacant payroll clerk position, which we have had challenges finding successful candidates for, along with recognition of our budgetary challenges, um, and the priorities in front of our organization, um, communications, for example. There are, uh, four recommended modifications that are, that are being proposed to the organization. As Renee presented earlier, the result of these modifications causes a reduction, uh, of budget savings of about twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. So, the four changes proposed include, um, modifying the position of the payroll HR clerk, as I mentioned earlier, to the position of village clerk, uh, with payroll and HR processing duties. As we talked about a couple of weeks ago, this is not an unusual combination in the, in the industry of municipal clerks. And, uh, we're proposing a wage placement, um, at H nine. I detail in there the, the increase, the enhancement in that wage range from what is currently a, uh, I'm sorry, going from H nine, an hourly position, to a salaried position, and you see, uh, identified there, the increase in the total salary as a result. The deputy administrator village clerk position that Caitlin currently has, um, I would be proposing to change to a deputy admin communications manager position. Um, this position would still serve as the backup to the village administrator, would still lead, uh, and work, work with others on HR management, but wouldn't have a village clerk responsibility, nor would they be supervising any employees directly. One note is that the function of IT management, which currently is a duty under Renee, under the finance director, would be shifted to, uh, being a duty of the deputy administrator and communications manager. This, uh, there's a meaningful reduction in the wage placement that's proposed from an S twelve salary range down to an S ten salary range. Our current intern, Gabe, Gabe's here. Um, Gabe is gonna finish out his graduate studies, uh, early this coming summer, and will celebrate, uh, his achievement, and he'll move on to a full-time something somewhere and do great things. But I would propose in this budget that we, uh, don't continue funding the graduate intern position after, uh, completion of Gabe's studies. And then, um, in recognition of Renee's performance, this is when you, this is when you like Hyde, right? And, uh, her successful financial management that we've enjoyed during her career here, as well as recognition of the clerk function being under her auspices, although I would note that today, the organizational design has Renee supervising two employees. The revised organizational design still has Renee supervising, directly supervising only two employees. Um, I would note that the IT shift of, of, uh, to the deputy is meaningful. And Renee and I are also planning, uh, to talk to the board in the, probably in December, about the, um, the option to utilize ARPA funding to support the management of those grant funds. It is proving to be, for all communities, a really complicated function. There are, um, there are specialized services in the marketplace now that can assist us big time with the challenge related to ARPA funding. So, we may be coming to in a month or so to ask for that sort of, sort of support, which would work to, um, uh, ease some of the financial burden on our finance director position. All that said, uh, my proposal recommends an increase in step to Renee, uh, and that's, that's identified in that fourth bullet on page one forty-two. I already noted the budget impact. Um, the, you know, the asterisk on the budget impact of a twenty-eight thousand dollar decrease is, one, our new hires, um, in our proposed budget, take the family plan. We don't know who our new hires are. They may be single, they may have alternative insurance, uh, from a spouse. So, um, or a, or a partner, uh, under state laws. So, um, uh, that is an unknown and, and could only potentially reduce the budget impact, because we've budged, budgeted the full family, family options. And then, uh, I would note that, uh, the initial, you know, negotiation process with any new candidate, especially in that we're looking to hire, uh, professional qualified candidates, may result in the village board considering, um, uh, a higher-than-entry, uh, step level in salary range. So, you know, there may be a, a push and pull in terms of how the, uh, how the actual final budget impact plays out. That's part of the reason why we included some contingency in your, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, HR budget. So with that said, the staff is recommending, um, uh, four items. The proposed organizational changes to administration, finance, and clerk functions. I can bring up the, it's in your packet. Um, and job descriptions for the village clerk and deputy admin comm manager positions are included in your packet. The modified hourly and salary wage scale charts, which take into consideration the recommendations, as I mentioned earlier. And then, the step increase for, uh, finance director Renee Mineholtz. Those are the four staff recommendations. And happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposal.
Board members, any questions?
One quick one, Todd. I see you said, uh, you're not going to recommend a new management intern?
Correct.
On page one forty-five, you still got that in there. Are you, is that, uh, gonna be a change, you know?
That could only be filled for half the year.
Right.
Pardon?
It's still gonna be there for half the year, Phil.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, while Gabe's still with us, um, he'll be supervised by the new deputy administrator.
Okay, thank you.
And then, poof. Or some sound like that. Is that not good?
Gabe, you're doing a great job. I feel like, well, Gabe's doing a great job.
Gabe's doing a great job.
He's gonna move on to great things. So, okay, any other comments, questions, or I'd look for a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, proposal organizational changes to the administration, finance, and clerk functions. Uh, two job descriptions for the village clerk and deputy administrator slash communications manager, three modify hourly and salary wage scale charts, and four, uh, step increase for the finance director Renee Mineholtz.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary Hertzberg, for a second.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. I have it.
And I'd like to retract my poof comment.
Good thing we don't do verbatim minutes.
I guess you could say that you're magical, Gabe? All right, so, next one, discuss and take action on resolution recommending approval of the Heritage Hills urban service area amendment. Tim, is this good to you?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Uh, very briefly, this is a request, um, excuse me, to expand the, the village's urban service area by approximately eighty-four acres. The area is shown on the screen, the, the central colorized portion, the, the lands are located on, on the north side of, of nineteen. This is the next step in this Heritage Hills development. The lands are already in the village, the zoning entitlements have been granted, so this is the next procedural step to open up this easterly half. Uh, included in your packet is a resolution. The resolution is a necessary component of the application materials that go to the regional plan commission, which would be the next step after the board take action. So, um, the plan commission did, uh, recommend that this move forward, and staff is as well and available for questions.
Board members' comments or questions?
Just, just 'cause I can't remember, do you know when the, the new lights and the new traffic signals that's going through, when that will happen?
Yeah, we're at division and, and-
You know when it will happen?
Uh, we're still meeting, I don't know, maybe Todd, if we're talking about-
Well, I wanna be clear, are you talking about the new intersection that, uh-
As we go, as we put this in, I mean, we already have more traffics coming through there, or, you know, I, I know it was, I just don't remember.
Yep.
I do not remember.
So, so we're, there's gonna be modifications at this intersection, which are already under discussion.
Yeah.
And then, perhaps you're asking about this future intersection.
Right there.
Right, Tim? Right, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about the status there?
All right, so we, we've been meeting with the DOT and are getting some information on opening up that right-of-way. Um, but in answer to your question, the timing of that, I don't know if is, is exactly known right now. I believe they had somewhere the, in, within five years, but I don't know if that is a fully funded and a definite date. So that, that's, it's a ways off, the short, the short version.
Do you have an idea how much of this would be put up before the traffic would, signals would be put up?
Um, actually, uh, representing the applicant is Brian Munson. Brian, I don't know if you, you can speak to that?
Uh, I have not been involved with the conversation on the, on the traffic side. I know they're ongoing with the DOT to get the agreements necessary to get that improvement in place. It is also, I would note, a condition of the multifamily project, uh, so it all comes tied together. And my understanding is that as soon as the DOT is, uh, signed off on the, the geometrics, that that will proceed forward in a really quick manner.
And just to make sure we're clear, is that, is it, is it clearly prescribed that, uh, signals are gonna be the outcome? Or is that still part of the process under the DOT review to determine whether that's gonna be signalized or some other method of control? Do we know?
Not, not yet.
Okay. I just don't, I don't wanna leave, lead you to believe right now, Bill, that for certainty, that, that the signalization, a signal is the control mechanism.
Well, I guess my concern is just that we have, the population gets there before the, the traffic control gets there.
I think what you're saying is that until the infr- infrastructure's approved to get going, you're not, it's not gonna happen with the apartments. I'm assuming what you're saying is the infrastructure's gonna have to be approved and ready to go before you even start on the others.
That was a requirement of the approval for the multifamily. The other aspect is part of the traffic study for the overall neighborhood did put, uh, specific triggers in place, whereas that had to be in place, or the project could no longer go forward. So there are controls contemplated. Uh, but again, uh, the development team's goal is to try to get that in, uh, as one of the early next, next coming phases, so that, that is addressed in a timely manner.
And again, I just wanna address specifics so as not to be lea- leading, leading someone down a different category. The, the conversation we've had and the requirements we have regarding the multifamily is, they wouldn't be granted occupancy until those intersection improvements are made. They might start construction, but occupancy would be the, the holdup item if the controls aren't appropriate. If I could just, real quick to that, this addition, uh, isn't necessarily going to change the pace at which Veridian is taking steps in development. Certainly, it's a step to move that way, but, um, the pace is gonna be, uh, coordinated in a procedural way with, uh, progressive development agreements and additions to the subdivision. Am I right, Tim?
Right, there are several phases within the, within the west side that still have to be, uh, undertaken.
And an interesting, interesting caveat to the development that you've already seen, um, Brian, you might know this more exactly than I do, but while you've seen the homes go up at a relatively rapid pace, I'd note that about half of them are vacant spec properties. In talking to Chris Ellers, uh, from Veridian a week or two ago, um, that was partly due to the tricks and challenges involved in the supply chain process for home construction. And where they saw the opportunity to succeed in sort of building the shelves and building, building exterior components of a property, they took advantage of that opportunity this construction season. Um, you can actually go onto Veridian's website, and they have color-coded those properties, and you can clearly see those that are available but uninhabited at the moment. So as you look at, at those houses, I think it's fair to say that about half, or about half are unoccupied.
Yeah, there's about forty to fifty sales anticipated in there, and that they're moving through, uh, consistent with the development agreement, uh, to implement it, and will continue on the next phase, is not consistent with the, the Veridian base.
I've heard, I've just heard surprising comments from, uh, from the public about, um, you know, the absorption and the pace of population, population change in our communities, so I wanted to be clear about that, which, which doesn't on its face appear to be the case.
Did you get your question?
Yeah, mostly, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Aaron?
Um, is Schumacher Road currently Town of Westport's road? Is Schumacher Road currently Town of Westport's road?
Bill, do you?
Yeah, actually, we, we have Schumacher to the top corner there is a village now.
Okay.
Yeah, east of Schumacher, the property land there is, is Westport.
Okay, I didn't know if it, that came in the phase of the development, but...
We know it.
No, because this, this property is fully annexed. Okay.
Other questions? Again, this is part of the process, as Tim pointed out, that we're going through. All right, then I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the USA Amendment and authorize village staff to file the necessary documentation with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission.
Motion by Sam Kaufman. You'll second. Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have discuss and take action on the twenty-two, twenty, 2022 Blue Ridge Park tennis court resurfacing project. Who's in, who's...
Sue, are you?
I can, or we can start with Gary if you want.
Oh, Sue, go ahead.
All right. So items number three and four go hand in hand, and I'll just talk about both of them and then answer any questions that you might have. This is, these two projects are ongoing efforts to upgrade and maintain the hard surface courts throughout the village. Tennis, basketball, and in the case of item number four, the Savannah Park Sport Court, which is roller hockey and tennis. We went out to bid on these projects, we opened bids on October fifteenth. We're bringing to you tonight a contract to resurface the tennis court in Blue Ridge Park, and also to replace, again, the sport court surface, the hockey boards and hockey service, surface in Savannah Village Park. There were two other projects that we also went out for bids, the replacement of the Tierney Park Tennis Court, and then the reconstruction of Hanover North's Tennis Court to become a basketball court. Both of those projects came back too far, over budget, to bring them to the village board for a conversation. The staff team and our consultants are going to look at making some adjustments to those plans and hopefully rebidding those after the first of the year. But we are feeling confident with the numbers that we received on these first two projects, and we'd like your approval to move forward.
Gary, do you want any other comments?
I would just say that the, you know, the Parks Committee supports this, you know, Sue's had a long-range plan, has been working with Bill over the years to, to deal with our, you know, tennis courts and basketball courts to, to improve them and keep them in decent condition, so, you know, the Parks Committee supports both of these.
What, what is the typical lifespan of all these things? Or Sue, would, the sport court, when did that go in? That's probably twenty-plus years?
That one is probably twenty-two years old, and is actually held up...
Good life.
Much, much longer than I would have anticipated twenty years ago when I, when I came here.
But a tennis court, fifteen to twenty years probably before a need for reconstruction. In between those years, it does definitely, does take attention, crack filling, resurfacing to make sure that they hold together.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or look for a motion?
I'll move to approve the Blue Ridge Park Tennis Court resurfacing project to hold up tennis court surfaces.
I'll second it.
Motion by Aaron Moran, second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just have it. So then we need another motion?
I'll move to approve the Savannah Park Tennis Court and Hockey Rink reconstruction to Parise construction.
Motion by Aaron Moran?
Second.
Second by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just have it. Thanks, Sue. Number five on our list, discuss and take action on WPPA union contract. We're going to be going in closed session? Okay. Do I need to take that first or read first?
You'll need to read the whole thing, then you...
All right. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So I'd need a motion to go into closed session.
Yep.
I'll move to go into closed session.
Motion by Bill Random?
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Roll call, vote.
Nyla Frye?
Aye.
Phil Williams?
Aye.
Phil Random?
Aye.
Chris Donner?
Aye.
Aaron Moran?
Aye.
Sam Kaufman?
Aye.
Gary Hertzberg?
Aye.
You are in closed session.
And I would, I would note that we would expect to return to open session for official